Hi ladies, it is chapter 19. We're ticking away after this. We have three more chapters, if you can believe that. And so I'm going to pray and start. Dear Lord, we thank you for this day and the beautiful weather we've had for the past few days. We thank you for your grace, your mercy, your love, and the light which you give us to explore Revelation, its meaning and its application to us in the 21st century. So accompany us in chapter 19, an important chapter, a battle chapter, and a wedding chapter. And Father, open our minds, but along with that, open our hearts to receive your words for us today, for it's in Christ's name we pray, amen. I think I've mentioned before that I'm not someone who is good with notes. I like to have it in my head and go from it. And when I use notes, you've seen what happens. But I try to have notes, especially when I'm referring to other scriptures. So I'm not rifling through the Bible, but I've got it right in front of me. But today, I wanted to read you something that I wrote to start us off. And I want to read it because I want to capture everything I was thinking when I wrote it. "Do you dream of the day when there is no daily report of COVID deaths? When you are not required to wear masks in stores? When you can sit inside Starbucks?" I know some of you probably don't go to Starbucks, but it's a metaphor since we're in an apocryphal book. It's a symbol of being inside with others when we've not been able to do that as freely as before. "Do you dream of the day when the term 'social distancing' is an anachronism? Do you dream of the day when you can come to 1046 Miller on a Tuesday morning and sit in a classroom next to each other? When we can gather as Christ's body in the sanctuary, unmask, and side by side in Sunday worship? If you do, then you can understand in a small way the hallelujahs of chapter 19." Why am I saying a small way? Because you have not yet waited and we have not yet waited for centuries for a promise that has been made to us. And so I'm trying to get across a point of the jubilation of chapter 19 as it begins. You know, you wonder how that jubilation could follow a verse like this, or verses like this. "With such violence the great city of Babylon will be thrown down, never to be found again. The music of harpist and musicians, flute players and trumpeters, will never be heard in you again. No workman of any trade will ever be in you again. The sound of a millstone will never be heard in you again. The light of a lamp will never shine in you again. The voice of bridegroom and bride will never be heard in you again. Your merchants were the world's great men; by your magic spell all the nations were led astray." And then listen to this. "In her was found the blood of prophets and of the saints, and of all who have been killed on the earth. After this, I heard what sounded like the roar of a great multitude in heaven, shouting, 'Hallelujah! Salvation and glory and power belong to our God; for true and just are his judgments. He has condemned the great prostitute, who corrupted the earth by her adulteries; and he has avenged on her the blood of his servants.'" Now, in doing the questions on this chapter, you are asked to write down these hymns. We've got a lot of hymns in this chapter. And we've got a lot of hallelujahs. And in fact, we have four hallelujahs in this chapter. And hallel, we have hallel Psalms. And in Scripture, in the New Testament, that word, hallelujah, is only found here in this chapter in Revelation. In the Old Testament, it's found 24 times. And I'm going to read you where it's found. It's at the beginning and end of Psalms 104, 113, 117. It's in the hallel Psalms, which are Psalms 113 through 118. It's in the last five Psalms in the psalter. They begin and end with the word, "hallelujah." That is Psalms 146 through 150. So the Hebrew psalter closes with God's chosen people singing, "hallelujah." And then the New Testament, we're closing down, as you know. The New Testament closes with God's redeemed people in heaven singing, "hallelujah." The hymns in Revelation 19, the hymns we're going to sing today, or say, or read, the hymns in this chapter are the last hymns in the Book of Revelation. Revelation is full of hymns. And it would be a wonderful exercise to go back and read all the hymns that you encountered in Revelation, because they all make sense. But here we arrive at a crescendo. And we can tell that because John is saying, "After this, I heard," and you recall in your questions, "I ask you to distinguish between what he heard and what he saw, what he was saying he saw." It's rich in both. But he says, "He heard what sounded like the roar of a great multitude." And then he's going to hear a voice from the throne. And then he's going to hear again what sounded like a great multitude in verse six, "like the roar of rushing waters and like loud pills of thunder." And we hear this on Mount Sinai in the Old Testament. It's when God shows up, we hear thunder and we hear the sound of rushing water. In fact, in the first chapter of Revelation, Christ's voice was like the sound of rushing waters. And so we are indeed in a very glorious and majestic moment as we encounter the first verses of chapter 19. So let me read again this first hymn, that it sounded like the roar of a great multitude. And when I was trying to explore that, where have we heard that before? And I thought of two instances. And they're sort of puny compared to what we're talking about here. But I think I've told you before, I'm an Alabama fan. And I know to people on the East Coast, as we are, or here in North Carolina, that it's more basketball that you're attuned to than football. But in the South, in the Southeastern Conference, it is football. And I mean, if you go to an Alabama football game, and you recall, we won the national championship again this year. And even in my house, there was the sound of thunder and the peal of roaring waters and the sound of this great multitude. So football games, let's say for you maybe basketball games. The other instance I thought of, and it so directly relates to this chapter, is in movies that you've gone to. You've been in a movie theater when there is an enemy and there's a loser and a victor. And you don't know how the fight's going to come out. And all of a sudden, there's a champion. And oftentimes, it's good and evil. But at those moments, I've been in a theater when the crowd stood up and yelled. Maybe you've done that too. That is the moment we're in here. This is when this actually takes place. There will be nothing like it that we've ever experienced before. So once again, hallelujah. "Salvation and glory and power belong to our God; for true and just are his judgments." For heaven's sakes, we've waited all this time to see justice come about in all those instances that we've been involved in where justice has not reigned. And we've experienced it in our history when we don't understand, where is God? Where is his justice? And now what this hymn is proclaiming, it has come. "For true and just are his judgments. He has condemned the great prostitute, who corrupted the earth by her adulteries. He has avenged on her the blood of his servants." Now, this is the blood that, remember, the souls underneath the altar in chapter 5 said, "How long, O Lord, until you bring your judgment? And now, and you avenge our blood." Now we see, at least in the vision, it's happening. It has not yet happened. It has happened in small increments over time. But what we're talking about here, this final judgment in real time, has not yet happened. But again, they shouted, "Hallelujah!" The smoke from her goes up forever and ever. Now, this is an allusion. And let me get to this. It's an allusion to an Old Testament verse. And I put so many different scriptures down that then when I... See, this is why I don't like to do this. At any rate, let me go to it this way. Because again, I'm lost in my notes because everything's important to me. But in the Old Testament, there is an allusion to this, of the smoke going up forever and ever. So this is not the first time. John would have known about this or heard it. He would directly know the allusion and the reference, which is escaping me at the moment. But I'm going to find it as I go along. But the idea here is because this smoke, it's not... It sounds like awful that we should rejoice that this smoke and the destruction that we've heard and that we've read, and all these people that we've seen, that it's eternal, it goes up forever and ever. There are two sides of it. And one side is the redemption of God's people, hallelujah. But the redemption of God's people means the condemnation and the retribution and the revenge, not revenge, but avenged of God. The vengeance of God comes. And when the vengeance of God comes in this way, it's irreversible. Do you see? So the smoke tells us that there is going to be a new heavens and a new earth. And the old earth and heavens have passed away. So there is going to be an end, and it's going to be eternal. But there's going to be a beginning, and it's never going to end. And so those are two ways of looking at things. And I'm going to say it again. I had a biblical theology professor who always said, "Anytime you see God's judgment, you're going to see his grace." Here we see it again, even here. "The twenty-four elders and the four living creatures fell down and worshiped God, who was seated on the throne; and they cried, 'Amen!' So be it," is what amen means here. Hallelujah. And what does hallel, yah, mean? Well, you might have guessed it. Hallel means praise or bring joy, bring excitement. There's a reason to celebrate. Yah, of course, is the shortened version of Yahweh. So hallelujah means praise God, of course, or sometimes we say, "hallelujah." Amen, hallelujah. Then a voice came from the throne, saying, "Praise God, all you his servants, you who fear him, both small and great." So this voice is coming from the throne. Is it God's voice? Is it Jesus? We don't know. And so many say, "Well, it doesn't seem like it because the voice says, 'Praise our God.'" So it could be God, but maybe not. It could be an angel surrounding the throne. But it comes out of heaven. "Praise our God, all you his servants, you who fear him, both small and great; and now they are called to praise." And then he says, "Then I heard what sounded like a great multitude, like the roar of rushing waters and like the loud pills of thunder, shouting..." And here, now we get the finale. "Hallelujah, for our Lord God Almighty reigns." Oh, we've waited, we've waited. Now, he's been raining all this time. What does this mean, he rains? It means it has started. But there's going to come a conclusion when it is a different way, when the new heavens and the new earth have been introduced and all God's enemies are put down. So so far, we've seen Babylon. In the rest of the chapter, we are going to experience the destruction of the beast and the false prophet, the sea beast and the land beast. But we're going to have to wait for the dragon until next week. So it's incremental. And we see they fall in the direct opposite... Direct opposite... I can't think of the word. So help me, put it in my mind. It's in the opposite way in which they were introduced. So who was introduced first? It was the dragon in chapter 12. Then in 13, we got the sea beast, who is called the Antichrist, even in the book. And then the false prophet, who is the land beast. And then Babylon, we start getting in 17. And then we see her in 18. And now we're in 19, and she's brought up again. The great prostitute is condemned. So hallelujah, for our Lord God Almighty reigns. Let us rejoice and be glad and give him glory; for the wedding of the lamb has come, and his bride has made herself ready. Fine linen, bright and clean, was given her to wear. Fine linen stands for the righteous acts of the saints. Okay, let's talk about this a minute. So in this hymn, we are not only talking about the sovereignty of God. And so why is there so much emphasis put on this one? That it's the sound of a great multitude, roaring waters, thunder? It's as though you're standing on Mount Sinai and God's presence is shaking everything. And the kingdom of this world has become the kingdom of our Lord. And now we're going to see the one who is king of kings and lord of lords. Can you tell I'm excited about this? Yes. But it also says, "The bride is going to meet the bridegroom." And so we're put in mind here of the Hebrew betrothal system, where there's a betrothal, but the wedding doesn't take place just at that moment. The couple is betrothed, so they're committed to each other. And even at that point, we'd have to get a divorce. But there's time that goes by, and the parents of the bride and the parents of the bridegroom come together and decide on the cost of the dowry. And in this case, we're talking about this royal wedding of Christ, the bridegroom and the church, the bride. And here we see that the dowry is none other than the crucifixion, the death of Christ himself, and his taking on the punishment, his taking on the judgment of my sin, of your sin, of the entire people of God, their sin, those who have received the seal of God on their forehead, which is the seal of the Spirit. And that is memorialized for us in our own baptism, the sign and seal of God's grace, of his commitment to us. And so this couple has been committed, but they're not yet married, you see. But now the price has been paid. And even though it already has happened, and we're in the season of Lent and we're going towards Easter now, where we'll celebrate the resurrection and the fact that we are God's redeemed people. And we too will be raised from our graves. But the wedding is yet to come. And although it's announced here, it's not going to take place yet. So we're still having to wait. If we belong to God, we have to get good at waiting. And that's how I started out. We're still waiting for COVID to be in a different season. I actually got my second dose of COVID, the COVID vaccine, this morning. I got the Pfizer. And so if I begin not to make sense, it's because I am already feeling a little loopy. But you can see, I have lots of energy. Notice the clothing of the bride. Verse eight, "Fine linen, bright and clean, was given her to wear." Christ presents the bride as pure. And so she is given fine linen, bright and clean. Linen, we are told, stands for the righteous acts of the saints. So let me move over. Isaiah 61:10 says this, and I'm referring to the bright linen because I want you to hear what the Old Testament has already told us. Isaiah 61:10, "I delight greatly in the Lord; my soul rejoices in my God; for he has clothed me with garments of salvation and arrayed me in a robe of his righteousness, as a bridegroom adorns his head like a priest, and as a bride adorns herself with her jewels." And so this again, in the New Testament, is pulling from imagery of the Old Testament prophets. We're going to see more of it in this chapter as well. And so the bride, while she waits on earth, she is to be faithful to her bridegroom to show him her love and devotion. That's what these righteous acts of the saints are. To wait expectantly for his coming, to be faithful to him, not to be idolatrous, as we've seen, that this judgment is against idolatry, idolatry of God's angels and idolatry of the inhabitants of the earth. In Christ, this is from William Hendrickson in More Than Conquerors. "In Christ, the bride was chosen from eternity. Throughout the entire Old Testament dispensation," that's an unfortunate use of the word when we're talking about Revelation. More of that to come when we get to chapter 20, though. "In Christ, the bride was chosen from eternity. Throughout the entire Old Testament era, the wedding was announced." And now we just had the announcement. "Next, the Son of God assumed our flesh and blood. The betrothal took place," you see, because a dowry is put down. "The price, the dowry, was paid at Calvary; and now, after an interval, which in the eyes of God is but a little while, the bridegroom returns." And it has come, the wedding of the lamb. The church on earth yearns for this moment. So does the church in heaven. And so we see this multitude. Who is this multitude singing? I mean, remember, they're the witnesses that we hear about in Hebrews, the Book of Hebrews, that there's a great cloud of witnesses. They're waiting on us. And so we, together with them, Hebrews tells us, "will be presented as the bride of Christ." The bride is contrasted with a prostitute. You've seen how the prostitute was described. But the bride is in this fine linen clothing. And remember, in chapter 12, we saw the bride symbolized as the woman with a male child, who was pregnant with a male child. And the moon and the sun were under her feet. She's in a royal, bright array. Ephesians 2:10 says this. If we have any doubt about what this fine linen standing for the righteous acts of the saints means, Ephesians 2:10 clears it up for us. "For we are God's handiwork, created in Christ Jesus to do good works, which God prepared in advance for us to do. So it's not our righteousness." That passage from Isaiah makes it clear. "He has arrayed me in a robe of his righteousness." It's his righteousness. But we are the faithful bride who does the works of service while we wait for the bridegroom to come get us. In Hebrew betrothals, then, when the wedding day did come, the bridegroom would go and call out his bride. And so that's what we haven't gotten to yet in the Book of Revelation. The announcement has been made. We're waiting for basically chapter 21. Then the angel said to me, this is nine on verse 19, I mean, chapter 19, verse 9. "Then the angel said to me, 'Write.'" And so John is called back in to write this blessing or benediction. "Blessed are those who are invited to the wedding supper of the lamb; and he added, 'These are the true words of God.'" Now, there's debate about, "These are the true words of God." Does it refer only to this blessing? Or does it refer to everything that is written? Well, it refers basically to both. The word of God is, "Blessed are those who are invited to the wedding supper of the lamb." Now, has it occurred to you that we are the guest of this wedding supper? But we are also the bride. And so at this proclamation, at this blessing, and this is the fourth blessing of seven in the Book of Revelation. And so you were given that handout before. Verse 10, "At this I fell at his..." Verse 10, "At this I fell at his feet to worship at the angel, who had said, 'Write.'" He falls at his feet, but he said to me, "Do not do it." He was rebuked. "I am a fellow servant with you and with your brothers. You hold to the testimony of Jesus. Worship God, and only the one true God; for the testimony of Jesus is the spirit of prophecy." And so thus ends this magnificent hymnology that we have in the book and in this chapter 19. Now we get on to more serious business. It's not, it too is a celebration, but it has some gory features to it. And so let's explore this now. "Now we turned from the hearing to the seeing. I saw," this is John, "I saw heaven standing open, and there before me was a white horse, whose rider is called Faithful and True." And so here we have heavens open, and what we're gonna have is Jesus and His armies to exit when heaven is open. Usually, when heaven is open, somebody's coming up, like John, when, in the initial vision, that he relates to us, he's coming up, or in this case, Christ is coming down. Now, not as a baby in a manger, but as the rider on the white horse. And so Christ is coming down. The only other time in Revelation that the heavens are open is in Revelation 4:1, and that is when John goes up. In Ezekiel 1:1, heaven was opened, and Ezekiel saw visions of God. And of course, this is not the last time we're gonna bring up Ezekiel, even today, because a scene here is taken from Ezekiel. Matthew 3:16, the baptism of Jesus, heaven was opened, and the Spirit of God came down. So Jesus is called Faithful and True. In the letter to the church of Laodicea in chapter three of Revelation, He introduces Himself as the amen, the faithful and true witness. And so we see that He is faithful to the prophecies of the Old Testament. He's fulfilled the prophecies, and He's true to His word. He fulfills everything written about Him. He is the truth, and He's compared with the father of lies in John 8. You know, in John, that's the gospel that has a lot of metaphors, just like Revelation does. "I am the bread of life. I am the way, the truth, and the life. I am, I am the great I am." And so there are all the I am's in John. But in chapter eight of John, there's also, Satan is called the father of lies, and it is said of him, "He was a liar from the beginning." And so here we have the one who is the one to stand up, the great, stand up to the great liar. So John says, "I saw heaven standing open, and there before me was a white horse, whose rider is called Faithful and True." Now, remember, we met a rider on a white horse in the first seal that was open. And that rider on the white horse was called the spirit of triumph. And so when you see a white horse, it implies a kind of triumph. So with justice, he judges and he makes war. Here's the idea of the just and the justifier. So now he's coming as judge. When he came in a manger, he came as Jesus to save His people, as Savior. Now he's coming to judge. With justice, he judges and makes war. "His eyes are like blazing fire." We saw that in chapter one. "And on his head are many crowns." Now juxtapose that onto the description of the dragon when we saw him. He had on his head seven crowns. When the beast came up, he had ten crowns or diadem. And now Jesus trumps them all, many crowns he has. "He has a name written on him that no one knows but He Himself." Now, what is this? And yet he's called Faithful and True. We find other names in this scripture. So why is this mystery here? Some say, "It's because that is it, because it is the mystery of God, that sometimes He doesn't reveal things to us. The things that are revealed are ours, but the secrets belong to Christ." And we know in those initial letters to the churches that in one of them, there was the Overcomer, who was given a name that only He knew. That, and so here in this passage, "He has a name that no one knows but He Himself." It is a mystery. Maybe we will know someday when we see Him. "He is dressed in a robe dipped in blood, and his name is the word of God." You might think this is the blood of the cross, but that's not being referred to. And I will read a passage. Let me find it. It is from Isaiah 63. "Why are your garments red, like those of one treading the winepress? I have trodden the winepress alone from the nations; no one was with me. I trampled them in my anger and trod them down in my wrath. Their blood spattered my garments and stained all my clothing. It was for me the day of vengeance; the year for me to redeem had come." Do you hear in that last segment, what I've been talking about, that the vengeance of God means the redemption of His people? Let me read this again. "I trampled them in my anger and trod them down in my wrath. Their blood splattered my garments, and I stained, it stained all my clothing. It was for me the day of vengeance." He came as the judge. "The year for me to redeem had come." On the cross, Jesus said, "It is finished." In Galatians, it says, "At just the right time, Jesus was born." He comes at just the right moment. This is going to happen when God lets Jesus know, even Jesus doesn't know, when the year for Him to redeem, this final redemption. Our salvation comes in stages, let's say. So right now, we're in the sanctification stage. We will one day be in the glorification stage. So our salvation is still happening, if you will, in the infinite mercy of God. So "He is dressed in a robe dipped in blood, and his name is the word of God." So here he is, faithful and true, the word of God, a name that only He knows Himself, the word of God. That's how God fights with His word. That's how He created with His word. That's how Jesus stood down the devil in the wilderness, by the word of God. The word of God is His weapon. The word of God is our weapon. Here, it looks like an army, but we never see the battle on the battlefield. Why? Because it's the word of God. There's going to come a day when God says, "It is the end. It is time, Jesus, go and bring your people." "The armies of heaven were following Him, riding on white horses and dressed in fine linen, white and clean." So they are described in the same way as the bride is described. Why? Because we are one in the same. We are the people of God. We are riding behind Him on white horses. The victory is also ours, you see. Christ is doing this for us, and we are accompanying Him in this vision. "The armies of heaven were following Him." There, it's not specified, but there could be angels, because in other places in the New Testament, it is said, "The angels of heaven will accompany Him." "Out of His mouth comes a sharp sword, with which to strike down the nations." Okay, this sword we've seen before in Christ's mouth. Chapter one, we've seen it in other places. It's the sword that is the weapon of His word, do you see? It comes out of His mouth. When the beasts are in battle and those frogs come out of their mouth, it's, they're spewing lies. And you see, the truth comes up against it and defeats the lies of Satan. "Out of His mouth comes a sharp sword, with which to strike down the nations. He will rule them with an iron scepter," that comes straight out of Psalm 2, "that he will rule them with an iron scepter." Scepter is, it's like a rod. So this is also like the shepherd's rod. And so the shepherd has his rod and his staff, where he protects the sheep from the wolves and the enemies, but he also rescues his sheep. He will rule them with an iron scepter. So no one will escape his rule, do you see? But some will rule with him, and some will be ruled by him and be destroyed and be tormented forever and ever, like the smoke that was rising up from Babylon. "On his robe and on his robe and on his thigh, he has the name written, 'King of kings and Lord of lords.'" Okay, so we've seen faithful and true. We've seen a name that no one knows but He Himself. And we've seen also the word of God. And now we're seeing king of kings and lord of lords. This is a powerful ruler who has come for His kingdom in a different way than the initiation of His kingdom on earth. So king of king and lords of lord. We've seen this in Revelation before. Let me see if I can find where the reference is. But in that reference, it's in the book of Revelation, but it is, it's called, he's called lord of lords. It's reversed. It's lord of lords and king of kings. And here, it's king of kings and lord of lords. And so here is this rider on the white horse coming to rescue. "And I saw an angel standing in the sun." I ask you in the questions to identify the three times in this chapter he saw. "I saw the heavens standing open. I saw an angel standing in the sun, who cried in a loud voice to all the birds flying in midair, 'Come, gather together for the great supper of God, so that you may eat the flesh of kings, generals, and mighty men, of horses and their riders, and the flesh of all people, free and slave, small and great.'" Oh, man, what a feast. How do you compare that to the wedding feast of the lamb, where you have delicacies? These delicacies are awful to even think of. But we've heard it before in the Old Testament. In, sorry. In Ezekiel 38 and 39, where we have Gog and Magog, because that's what's being pictured here. The war depicted in Revelation 19 will mark the fulfillment of the eschatological battle prophesied in Ezekiel 38 and 39. In this prophecy back in Ezekiel, Gog of the land of Magog is an archetypal pagan power plotting to invade, overrun, and devastate helpless Israel. Here, we have again the battle, and Israel is the church. And the church, in John's day, remember, is being persecuted, is being overrun, is being devastated, and is helpless. "But the Lord promises to come to His people's defense, taunting Gog. 'You will fall on the mountains of Israel, you and all your troops, and the people who are with you. I will give you as food to every king, a predatory bird and beast of the field.'" That's Ezekiel 39:4. The Lord commands Ezekiel to issue the supper invitation. "Son of man," this is what the sovereign Lord says. So son of man, he's calling out in Ezekiel. "Call out to every kind of bird and all the wild animals, assemble and come together, from all around to the sacrifice I am preparing for you, the great sacrifice on the mountains of Israel. There you will eat flesh and drink blood; you will eat the flesh of mighty men and drink the blood of the princes of the earth, as if they were rams and lambs and goats and bulls, all of them fat and animals from Bashan. At the sacrifice I am preparing for you, you will eat fat till you are glutted and drink blood till you are drunk. At my table you will eat your fill of horses and riders, mighty men, and soldiers of every kind,'" declares the sovereign Lord. That is from Ezekiel 39, verses 17 through 20. So here, we're coming to an end. I wanna see if I, and John has had to leave the room, so my timekeeper is no longer with me. But I think I'm gonna do the wise thing and not press my time. So let's continue. "Then I saw," so this is the third, "I saw." "Then I saw the beast." So first he saw heaven opening, standing opening, and the rider and the white horse came down. Then he saw an angel who was crying, "Come, gather for this grotesque supper." "Then I saw the beast and the kings of the earth and their armies." So here we have the rider on the white horse and his army. And then we have the beast and the kings of the earth and their armies gathered together to make war against the rider on the horse and his army. Remember, we saw in a previous chapter the drying of the earth so that the armies of the north could come down. And so here, it's the flow of these chapters as in the book of Revelation and the apocalypse. These, this vision flows one into another here. "But the beast was captured, and with him the false prophet, who had performed the miraculous signs on his behalf. With these signs, he had deluded those who had received the mark of the beast and worshipped the image." Do you see, it's all about the truth versus the lies and the delusions and the deceptions. "The two of them were thrown alive into the fiery lake of burning sulfur. The rest of them were killed with a sword that came out of the mouth of the rider on the horse, and all the birds gorged themselves on their flesh." What a picture and image to end this chapter with. Next time, we're gonna look at chapter 20. That's the one where the thousand years is brought up. So So guess what we'll be talking about? But here I wanted to read something from Dennis Johnson's. And I hope I can find it. Okay, now all my papers. See, this is why I can't use notes. Okay, here is what I wanted to read. Except it's not really. Maybe I didn't put it down. Okay, I'm sorry you're struggling with me in my own struggle here. I thought I had put this in my notes. And I didn't, so let me see if I can summarize. You, you see that the beast and the false prophet are thrown alive into the fiery lake, which is where Satan is also going to be thrown into the fiery lake. The others noticed, the rest of them were killed with a sword that came out of the mouth of the rider on the white horse. And so there's a distinction being made between the, the beast, the antichrist, if you will, and the false prophet. Now, some of the views of this book suggests that there's going to be one antichrist at the end. But many scholars portray it as it's, it's a world power, which we've seen many of Egypt, Assyria, Persia, Babylon here in this, in, in the Old Testament. So it's these continuing world mindsets, world powers that are emboldened by a government and a military that can persecute and by what the world's culture presents as intoxicating wine represented by Babylon. I don't want you to see it just so literally. Because throughout the ages, there have been these wars where kingdoms fall. And, but this is speaking of a different fall. This is the end. And so, but I don't want you to divorce it from those other battles that have been fought. And even the discussion here of Gog, the king from the land of Magog. And we see that this is the imagery that John is using in his own chapter. So what do we do with this? Well, first of all, just takeaways. You are the bride. I am the bride. We are the bride of Christ. In the book of Revelation, we have not yet come to our wedding. It's been announced, but we're going to have to wait. And so we are the bride. We are left here on earth to be the faithful bride, to boldly wear his robe of righteousness. And in that regard, submit our, our acts of mercy to the world around us. For these that it, it sometimes is hard, especially if you have people in your own neighborhood, have people more close to you in your own family, who would be more akin to the inhabitants of the earth than they would be to the redeemed. It's hard to look at this passage, quite frankly. I've got some in my own family. It's hard to look at this and say, why would I rejoice over that? And so here is this clash of our own compassion. And that is what I wanted to read to you out of Johnson's book. But I'll read it next time because it's very good. But we can't be swayed over by an overly docile view of God's justice that is tolerant of sin. Sin is going to meet its end. And those who have perpetrated it, those who have enticed, those who have refused to come before God and repent and ask that the robe of Christ righteousness be given to them to wear. They will suffer this judgment that we're reading about. And we're going to continue to read about next time. So there are, there's the celebration of the redeemed and the misery of the condemned. Let's pray. Let's pray first of all, that we represent, that we are ourselves faithful and true witnesses, as Jesus calls himself. That we are faithful and true witnesses, not just with our words, but with our deeds, with the way we handle those who the Lord will have vengeance on. The vengeance is his. Right now we have to be patient, even with that, even with the injustices. I'm not saying we don't fight against and we don't advocate for justice. That is some of our righteous works, you see, that he's given us to do. So let us be the patient bride, waiting for our bridegroom to come. And at the same time, the, the army of God that goes into the battle that is waging, as we saw in chapter, was it eleven or twelve? Now it was eleven, no, it was twelve. The, the battle that is being fought in heaven. It's the same battle as we're fighting here. So I'm going on too long. I want to stop. And I think that COVID vaccine is working its way into my brain fog. So let me stop and pray. And I will be with you next week. Father, we do pray. Thank you that you have given us white linen, bright and clean, to put on. And Father, help us realize that that's how you see us. Help us to go to you quickly in confession and get rid of our shame, get rid of our guilt, because we wear your white robes. And so Father, we pray that we would be your faithful and true bride during our time here on earth as we await your second coming. Father, we pray that we would be busy with your work that you've given. You've put it in our hands and you've ordained it from the beginning of the world. Father, we thank you. Give us strength, give us courage and give us your loving spirit that others may be drawn to us in the way we were drawn to you. For it's in Christ's name we pray. Amen.